All right, let's get started. We'd like to welcome everyone that's here in our chambers and appreciate all those who are out there watching in TV land. I've asked Dave Anderson to give us an opening prayer.
Father in heaven, we are very, very grateful for the many blessings and opportunities which thou has provided for us. We're grateful for those who have gone before us in this wonderful community and for the contributions that they have made to bless our lives and provide the things that we now enjoy and pray that thou will bless us, that we will do our part to make a contribution to those others that enjoy this community at this time and those who will in the future. We pray for thy guidance and support and insight and again thank thee and do so in the name of our Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thanks, Dave. I've asked council member Beck to lead us into pledge allegiance.
Please proceed after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brings us down to public comments. Anyone that would like to come and address the mayor and the council, feel free to come up and address us. Where's your tie?
I'm sorry. Mayor and council members, my name is Doug Ford. I'm a citizen and business person here and I, mayor, I do apologize for not having my tie. I was on the way home and just realized that it's the council meeting, so I just wanted to stop by. Otherwise, you know I would have had my tie.
Yeah, I know how you wear a tie.
Do you believe I even own a tie?
That's where I was going to say. That's where I have a question.
I own one.
Yes.
A pre-tied one, but I don't use it very often. Anyway, I just wanted to take a second. I think the, you know, all the departments and the administration of the city, I think they really should be commended on, you know, what they do to make, you know, a great place for us as citizens to live here and as business people also. So, you know, it's a job well done for really all of the administration and the departments. There's a couple of things that stood out to me, however, in the last couple of weeks and I wanted to, I think, recognize some things that, you know, first of all, if we take a look at the parks and the facilities that we have in this city, they are really, really well maintained, both the, you know, the buildings plus the grounds. I mean, look at even the building that we're in here now and the grounds around it over at the city park. The north park is beautiful, well-maintained, the new, the new park up on the east side of town. So, you know, from a, from the parks department and those people who are involved in that, I think, you know, they should be commended for, you know, a job well done. The other thing that stood out to me in just the last couple of weeks is driving around in the city, the, the streets, there's been a lot of work by the streets department this summer and I think in previous summers too. A lot of the asphalt overlays that they have done, there's a huge stretch down on the far north end of Main Street that they road mill and overlaid. And then all of the, the side streets up and down Main Street, there's been a lot of work this year done to make those streets, you know, in good shape. And I think it's some forward thinking that we're, you know, we're maintaining these and taking care of them before that they get bad and you have to tear them up and start over again. So, you know, I think to the streets department for, you know, a job well done there too. And for you as mayor and, and council members, you know, for providing the, the resources for these, all these departments to do such a good job and set, you know, example of what this city looks like to us as citizens and business people and just a great place to, to live and to do business. So, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Appreciate that, Doug. Anyone else would like to come up and address the mayor and council? Seeing none, we'll go to council comments. And let's start here with Councilman Argal.
I don't have any tonight, mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Mendenhall.
We had a Parks and Rec meeting, let's see, yesterday, that we discussed the, some updates in the Parks and Rec department and just kind of go along with what Doug said and, and he's one of those volunteers that serves on that committee. So, it's, it's neat to see the, the progress that does happen in the Parks and Rec department and, and that the, the forward thinking to go along with what Doug said, to try to plan for the future and plan for future residents in our community. This was sent to me today. I wanted to quickly read it in the political season we're in. We're going to come up on elections pretty soon and this stood out to me in this election season and it was brought to me by a guy up in Salt Lake that came down and saw me today and said that he just feels when he enters into our city limits that it feels like more of a community. When you get past the point of the mountain especially, you're, it's hard to know whether you're in, you know, Cottonwood Heights or whether you're in, you know, the neighboring city, South Jordan, West Jordan, whatever it is, besides a, a sign. And he says when he comes to Spanish Fork, he feels like he's entered in a community. He said, sent this to me. He said, "Long after this election is over, Trump and Hillary will still be rich. Half of us will be able to claim we, quote, 'One, the other half will have four years to say that's why we didn't vote for X.' Just remember, we live in a different America than they do. We have to live, work, and eat with each other in our America. We don't get to hop on a private jet and fly away from our community's problems. We are what makes this country what it is. Not the president. He or she will not stop crime in our neighborhoods. He won't stop people from stealing your identity. And she or he will not stop anyone from shooting up our local nightclubs. Hillary will not come teach your child right from wrong, but you can. Trump will not come to your home and teach her math, but you can. We, as a united people with sound morals, values, and ethics, can make this country whatever we want. Vote for whomever you want, but remember, we are the ones that shape our communities, not them." And he shared that with me and saying, "Spanish Fork does a pretty good job in shaping our community." So, kudos to our city administration, like Doug said, and kudos to you citizens that helped shape and make our community such a great place because that's, that's where the rubber meets the rubber." That's all I have, mayor.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Scobbs.
Mayor, two small things to report. We had the library, our library board meeting last week. We talked about upcoming programs, which are, some of them are already advertised on the city's website, others that will be coming forward. One thing of note, as we talked about, we looked at, looked at program attendance for the last year, the different programs, both for youth, adolescents, and adults. The total overall program attendance through the last fiscal year was 15,944 patrons. And that's patrons both to the library, that's more specifically for the different programs itself, reading programs, the Tuesdays in the park, those types of things. And so, library is a wonderful resource for the community, a lot of people using it and we just encourage more people to use it. Really, it's a, a great gem for the city. And then, secondly, we have the Veterans Council quarterly meeting on Wednesday evening and I will report on that in the next, next council meeting.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Mayor, I wanted to mention the farmer's market on Saturdays. We're in October, so we're winding down. The first Saturday of November will be the last one. So, Mark's really like a month left that we'll have the farmer's market. So, invite everybody to come out to that, just out here in our parking lot west of the city office building, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 in the afternoon. And there's still plenty of things. I hear Peaches are going to be there one more week, so you better jump on that. I wanted to, some of us, I think all of us were able to go congratulate Steve Money on his retirement. Steve Money had worked for the city for a very, very long time. I don't even know how long, but 25 years and is, is the reason that we have such a fabulous rodeo in, in our community. And so, congratulate him publicly. Wanted to make mention of a wonderful event. We never have lack of wonderful things going on in Spanish Fork. And in July of 2015, a neighbor of, of mine and, and a young lady from Spanish Fork, Bailey Holtridge, was in a side-by-side accident and was burnt severely. She later passed on last year, but last year they did a 5K and they're going to continue that 5K. And that is on October, Saturday, October 15th. It'll start at 8:00 a.m. All of the money goes to the University of Utah's burn victims unit. And I think it's 10 bucks a person or like 35 for four people or a group of four or something like that. So, but just, just want to let you know of that opportunity, there's always something going on if, in our community that you can be involved in. So, that's all I have, mayor.
Great. Thank you. Council member.
I have a couple of things. This week I was able to meet with Shawna Warnock, who is running for a position in District 13 on the Nevo School District Board. And I was just really impressed and wanted to let the community know that she's very approachable and willing to talk to those of you in her district and I think Mike and Brandon both met with her as well. And she's very smart and ambitious and I think she would do a really fantastic job. And then I wanted to thank the Spanish Fork Police Department two weeks ago when we had Goose here and he, he came in during public comment and just made a comment that he needed some more policing on Fourth East. And I went down that road by Friday and there was a traffic.
Speed trailer.
Okay, speed trailer there. So, thank you for being so quick on that. That was great. We also, as the Chamber of Commerce, we are hiring a new director position. We will be accepting applications through the end of next week, October 14th. And you can email your resume to info@spanishforkchamber.com. There's also more information on the Spanish Fork Chamber's Facebook page. And then on Monday, we will have our October Business of the Month and it is going to be security insurance. Clark Swenson, how long has, has security insurance been around, Brandon? 50, 60 years?
Seven years.
It's been a long time. He's, he's been a great asset in our community. I think he was one of the people that started the Rotary and Chamber Golf Tournament. He was very actively involved in the Chamber of Commerce as well and continues to be. So, we would like to invite anyone that would like to come out. There's always cake there if that's enticing. 12 o'clock on Monday at security insurance. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. All right, I've just got a couple of items here. On October 13th, at our North Park Pavilion, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m., if you have any questions about future roads, highways, community development, trains, bus, trails, air quality, the planters from Mountainland Association will be there along with UDOT and UTA to answer any of your questions. You can bring your kids, you can talk about and see what the future vision is for Utah County. So, they wanted us to announce that. Again, that'll be October 13th at 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. at our North Park Pavilion. And you can come and ask all the questions you want about all those items. The other thing I was able to do last week, I was able to go up to our new power plant that we just purchased with our UMPA agency that we're part of, did a tour on that, really neat facility. And that's going to take care of our power needs for a lot of years to come help with our base power and it's, they're doing great things there with our UMPA. And just lastly, today I was able to talk to two different scout groups that came to the city. And it's fun to have the scouts come and talk and ask questions. It's always neat. The one question I always ask them, I said, "How much does it cost to run the city? What's the city budget?" And, you know, one will say $500,000 and another say a million. And when I tell them that we're around $75 million, they all, their eyes get real big and so, but it's good to have them here, get them involved, and let them understand what cities do for us. The one thing I remind them all to do is to be good citizens, to take pride in your city and be a good volunteer and make this a great city, which we have. And as we do that, as we all work together, we can make this the best city in the nation and it's all good. Okay, let's move along. Spanish Fork 101, snow ordinance. Chris.
Okay, last year at the end of the snow season, a new ordinance was passed regarding parking on the streets during snowstorms. And our SFCN, Channel 17 department did a really good job on a video and I'd like to show that first. If you could play that.
Tonight we bring you updates during Spanish Fork's Storm of the Century. A new ordinance has been issued requiring citizens to remove vehicles from public streets during snow removal operations. On site is our very own dedicated weatherman, Jeffrey Howe.
City officials have mandated vehicles to be removed from city public streets during snowstorms and for up to 48 hours afterwards or until snow plowing is completed.
Our illustrious mayor, Laufson, has authority to extend the 48 hours in the event of an unusually large storm.
Don't panic, don't panic. If the 48-hour period is extended, we will post that information on the city's webpage, on Spanish Fork Channel 17, and through mass communication messages.
Mayor!
No further questions, no further questions.
By removing vehicles from public streets, snowplows will remove snow faster and more efficiently. This will in turn save taxpayer money and make traveling more safe. Back to you in that warm, comfortable studio.
For more information on snow and ice removal plans and procedures, please visit the Public Works website at spanishfork.org. Until next time, keep it classy, Spanish Fork.
What I wanted to show, this, this video is on the website for snow plow operations on spanishfork.org. And it lists the four main reasons why this ordinance was passed. I just wanted to go over that with the general public so they understood. First of all, the, the law is that you cannot park on the street during a snowstorm and a snowstorm is designed, defined as, as when it's snowing and starting to accumulate on the roads where you have to start plowing. So, if you have just a light snow that is melting, that would not qualify as a snowstorm under this ordinance. But once it starts accumulating, we have to plow, then this law goes into effect and it basically says you cannot park a vehicle or a trailer on, on the side of the road during that storm event and then for up to 48 hours afterwards while we're plowing, while we're plowing the, the streets. There was four main reasons why this was passed and we've listed that here on the website. And we will be posting this on social media as, as the winter approaches. But first of all, our streets will be cleared more quickly and thoroughly. This will, will, will be more efficient for us, so we will be able to save time and money in, in clearing the streets and we'll be able to go more thoroughly instead of trying to go around all the parked vehicles and trailers on the streets. We also believe that this will decrease the number of incidents of damaging these vehicles and trailers on the side of the streets with our snow plowing operations. It's safer for both the plow drivers and, and the general public to not have these side obstacles on the streets while we're plowing, especially on steep roads where the plows have a little bit less traction and, and they're trying to go up or down a hill. And then finally, it used to be the law in Spanish Fork that you couldn't park along the side of the street all winter long. And it just started in November and then you wouldn't be able to park along the street at all, snowstorm or not, until April. And, and during that time, we got a lot of comments of, of people really loving how clear the streets were and, and uncluttered. And, and since that ordinance has gone away, we've got a lot of comments of people missing those times when the streets were, were cleared of, of maybe vehicles or trailers that have been there a little too long or broken down. And so, this will create a regular occurrence where those vehicles and trailers have to be removed from the streets and, and cleared and maybe they won't come back as quickly as, as we would not like them to do. So, any, any questions about the ordinance? We're, we're going to gear up and try to give notice and reminders to people and, and give mostly just warnings to people that are violating the ordinance.
I'd like to have the chief come up and talk to us about some Bigfoot sightings. Or maybe it wasn't Bigfoot.
The mayor was seen walking through. No, just a couple of things I'd like to update the public on. We've had a sighting of a cougar today in town around the 1400 East, 1200 South area. Ivory Homes has some homes under construction up in that area and one of their builders saw out in the field to the south of their development, a cougar running through the field. It ran through the field and he lost sight of it as it went into the areas where the homes were, jumping over fences and things like that. So, we, we did put out a message over our Everbridge system contacting all the people in the neighborhood there, asking them to take their children or their dogs inside, things like that. We also contacted our elementary schools, the two that were in that area, asked them to keep their kids in if they desired. Of course, they did that. And that was the only sighting that we had on the cougar. In the last, oh, 10 years, we've had, I think, two cougars in town. This would be the third. And each of the other two times, the cougar was seen several different times and we've had several different calls on the cougar and where its whereabouts and where it was running to and such. And we haven't received that on this one. Not to say that it's gone, but it does appear that it's hunkered down somewhere or left the area and we're, we're hoping that it's, that it's gone. Division of Wildlife and Resources, they were contacted. They've been in the area looking around, trying to get their biologist to, to check the tracks, make sure that it was in fact a cougar. But they've since given it up until we receive another phone call on that. We had a bear sighting twice now, at different locations, some up by the golf course, some down by the homes on the east, River Bottoms area, I guess, and then also up on the, the homes up by the gun club. That bear is still yet to be caught. It's still, we think it's the same bear. In each and every circumstance, it has the same description given to us from the sighters. It indicates that it's a, you know, a yearling, an 18-month-old bear, just trying to find his way. Still trying to find that. The DWR again is working with us on that one, placing a trap here and there, trying to get, to catch the bear. But at this point in time, neither of those wild animals appear to be aggressive or attacking individuals, which is trying to perhaps find, find their way to a safer spot.
Right. Thanks, chief. Yeah, one of those cougar sightings years and years ago was in my backyard.
Yeah.
Down on Second West. And it took off through the Broadbank School and headed to the field. So, yeah, they're out there and they, so be careful, be careful out there. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scobbs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. New Business, Resolution 16-10, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement extending Utah County Major Crimes Joint Task Force.
Thank you, mayor. At the end of the last meeting, Chief Adams indicated the council that our contract for the Major Crimes Task Force was expiring and it needed to be extended. That's what this resolution does. So, for many years, our city along with many others in the county have combined to form a joint task force to address major crimes in the county. Been very effective. In fact, Dart Police Station yesterday served as a, a base as they executed a warrant. So, this is something that's beneficial to, to slow crime, to eliminate crime. We're proud to be part of it and we do recommend approval of this resolution and continue our participation in that program.
I'll make a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement extending the Utah County Major Crimes Joint Task Force.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Beck, second by Councilman Gordon. This will be a resolution, so we'll do a roll call vote. Councilman Scobbs.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
All right. Passes Resolution 16-11, amending electrical utility rates.
Thank you, mayor. So, some months ago, Utah Municipal Power Agency, the interlocal entity of which we are a member and through which we obtain our electric power, commissioned a, a rate study by a nationally renowned consultant. We've recently received the results of those and I think the good news for our city compared with some of our co-member participants in that agency is our rates are pretty much where they need to be. They are recommending however, a couple of adjustments. For the city, this will be revenue neutral. Some of our users may see a little swing upward or downward depending on where they fall. We, we do need to increase the user rate to cover the, some of the system requirements that are constant and make sure that we can meet our expenses. And so, for the electric charges for residential customers, the monthly charge will become $6. It has been $3. And our usage rate will be .08649 per kilowatt hour used. We've got some of the lowest rates in the country actually, or in Utah and Spanish Fork and this will continue there. What we have found is that our, many of our commercial customers have been subsidizing to a small degree some of our larger user customers. So, there's been a little bit more of a change there. So, our General Service 1 customer will now pay a $15 per month charge plus a rate per kilowatt hour used based on the amount of usage, up to 1,000 kilowatt hours will be .12650. The next 4,000, .07237. And over 5,000 is .04820. These are still extremely low rates and these actually represent a reduction. There we go. I won't have to shout out these any longer. Our General Service 2 will be a 30-month charge plus the rates that you see there under paragraph 3. Then the large power customers will see a slight increase, so their service charge will be $50 a month, a power demand charge of $10 per kilowatt plus a usage charge of .04227 per kilowatt hour used. As I indicated, overall for the city, this will be revenue neutral. For our customers, again, depending on your usage a little bit, you may see a little bit of an upward or a downward swing. Most of our commercial users will see a slight decrease and most of our large users will see a slight increase. So, that's what this resolution does. Now, we still have another part to go and that deals with the net metering that relates to solar power, wind power, and other forms of self-generated power. And we've got several recommendations that we're looking at and this little bit bigger group will be studying that. And so, we just want to give our residents, our citizens, you know, knowledge that we're working on that, that that is not part of this, but will be coming. But as far as this goes with the regular rates.
That's for a later conversation. There you go.
As far as this goes for our regular rates, this is revenue neutral and represents, you know, what was presented by the consultant as a, as a fair and equitable rate for our residents. Again, keep in mind that with these rates, we're among the lowest in the state and also the lowest in Utah. The state is one of the lowest in the country.
Great.
Do you hear, I have a question?
Go ahead, please.
Sorry, Chad. So, number one is residential and number four is like a large electric, electric consumer. Will you remind us what two and three are? General Service 1 and 2?
The General Service 2 is an area that is a little bit higher than the Service 1. They're both commercial. And it is an area that we have And it is an area that we have to put a lot of infrastructure in, in order for that area to develop and get that. So that's the difference. It's generally the area north of Tenth North and east of about Second or Third East is the area where that is, and that helps pay for the infrastructure that went in there for that area to be developed.
Thank you.
So we have eleven large business customers, correct, Chris?
Yeah, I think that's about right.
Okay, so.
That's who it's affecting, those eleven.
Those eleven. And so, and I'm assuming through our conversation, Sapa is probably our largest user.
Yes, by far.
So in that conversation we had with that thing, the rate for those larger customers is going to increase about three and a half percent, which, looking at Sapa's bill, oh, those eleven people are going to have to absorb all that all at once, which is, when I do the math, and you can tell me if I'm different, that's $105,000 a year that those eleven customers are going to have to absorb, which for a couple of them is going to be a pretty large chunk because they are large users. And I know it's equitable, and we need to move that. But is that a huge increase for them? And we're just.
There's one customer that has over $100,000.
There's one customer that has a monthly power bill of over $100,000, $100,000 a month. Their bill would go up, I think, a little over $5,000 a month. And so that kind of gives you a feel for what the worst-case scenario is, and then it goes down from there to the eleventh one is quite a bit smaller.
Right.
But it is absolutely up to you if you would like to maybe do half now and half later, or graduate in some way, that would be fine.
Okay. I just, and I figured about $4,000 when I was just doing the three and a half, looking at their average bills, $105,000 a month, which is a huge amount.
Pete's going to kill me for that one. Sorry.
Dave's not here to fight over that. You shouldn't.
That's all yours.
I did not mean to interrupt you.
You're fine.
But I did. So go ahead.
And I guess my concern is those eleven customers absorbing that a large amount in a one-year period, yeah, the least one's not going to go up that much, and the others are negligent, they're not going to see that. And Sapa is one of our largest users, yeah, huge.
One of our largest users, and it's got to be a little bit relative. I mean, it's, when we talk about $100,000 a month, somebody paying that in any utility to a city or a private company, their gross annual revenue is a pretty large number, too. So it's, I think, when we talk about stuff like this, we do talk about percentages, but if we start talking about dollars and scare, not scare necessarily, but the numbers can be funny things where we talk about somebody spending $100,000, because none of us would ever spend $100,000 a year on an electric service, but large companies that make large things do that all the time. And so it's got to be relative to put in context to residential users going up, you know, maybe a percent, and that's a few bucks. A large commercial user that uses most of the power in South Valley goes up a lot more.
Well, and I think it's good to note that the electric bills for these customers fluctuate between $5,000 and $10,000 each month. And so this is, the electric bill depends a lot on a lot of things, temperature, how many days are in the month, and so if that helps you get a perspective on what effect this might have. But this is revenue neutral, so where that rate went up, $100,000, the rate for everyone else went down $100,000, but there's so many others that it's really not going to be able to fill that.
And I understand that with the general business, because you have a large amount that's, and actually, they're going down in the subsidy that they talk about. We need to make that equitable. My concern was that just these eleven customers were going to absorb a pretty large amount in a year, and yeah, they have an income, but when their rates go up, that just means, you know, they have to adjust for that stuff even a little bit, so.
So the studies showed that that was what their real cost to the system.
System was.
Is. And so to be equitable, you might look at it and say they were subsidized a bit for the last period of time, too. So there's a number of ways to work out. If you want to phase it, we'd support whatever action the council wanted.
One thing that I think is good to note, the public isn't getting to see some of the discussion that you had in a work session, so this isn't the first time you guys have talked about this. We've talked a little bit about this in the UNPA meeting in St. George in March, and then again, last two weeks ago, a week ago, and then, of course, tonight. We were a little bit nervous when we commissioned this study as a part of UNPA, just wondering, what are the numbers going to come back? Are we out of whack? Are we close? And gratefully, the consultant, you'll remember as a council, the consultant said we were really close, one of, I think, the closest of all the UNPA cities, that we, our rates really weren't out of whack for either the residential, the commercial, general service rate, or the industrial large user rate. So what these numbers represent is us making a complete change to the consultant's recommendation in one step. If, so the residential rate basically stays the same, some minor tweaks. The general service rates have some adjustments, one down, one up.
One down, 1.4 down, so over the total, but, yeah.
Yeah, and then the industrial moves. If you would like, we can do this over a timeframe, we can do it all at once. Gratefully, the numbers are not that large, again, percentage-wise, and so they're big dollar amounts, and I don't think we want to misconstrue that it's real money to teach business. But we can do it now, we can do some of it now and some of it again in six months. We can do it effective in a couple of months and just give them notice so that they can start preparing for it. You can adjust this however you're comfortable. I'd be in favor of doing it now, after the meeting that we.
Let me address one thing that's kind of been discussed here. So keep in mind, the study's looking at what we need to generate to keep our system whole, okay? And as we know, we're in really good shape. We need very little adjustments. Now, we don't like to raise anybody's rates, but as he indicated to us, large users have been subsidized by the commercial users. So we're trying to be equitable and balance that out. Now, as has been noted, we can do that over time, we can adjust, but keep in mind, this is revenue neutral. So if we adjust those over time, we have to adjust somebody else's back up over that same period of time, so it remains revenue neutral. We can't, we can't be taking a drop and keep our system whole. So, you know, my recommendation would be, if you want to phase it over a little bit of time, don't pass any of it tonight. Let's make those adjustments so we can keep it revenue neutral.
I'd be in favor of the data being shared with the ones that'll affect them most. I think that data was great, great data, that people that are, paid lots and lots of money to study this stuff and report to cities, not just our city, but a lot of cities, including UNPA, on this stuff. I would be in favor of sharing, I know some of that might be a little confidential, but some of our businesses, I think, would be well-served by saying, we didn't just make this on the fly and decide that, you know, you needed to pay a little bit more money into the system, this is where it came from, because that was some really good numbers shared with us in that study.
And the other thing you need to know, a lot of these companies, big companies, have budgeted their time for their power costs and what it's going to be. It'll adjust because they'll use some, more or less, but we're close to the end of the year, so I don't think that's going to be a big effect on them because they'll be redoing their budgets, probably the first of the year. Here again, my feeling is, you know, this residential has been subsidizing the commercial, and I think we need to bring them back into whack and bring it where it needs to be. I don't feel it's going to be that big of a hit on those big companies. You know, the most is going to be 5,000 for them. They're a big company, I think they can absorb that. I think, my feeling is, is we pass it the way it is and get it equaled.
Is that data proprietary that was shared with us, or can?
I think ones that's shared with us, I think we make it available. I don't see any reason why we can't. We're still working on the net metering side, we may want to hold that back, but I don't see why we wouldn't put the rest of it on our webpage and make it available.
Yeah, the individual use data, we wouldn't be able to give out, so if somebody wanted to see what.
Well, sure. Publicly, we don't want to talk about companies and their business and their.
But this study, is this what you're talking about, this study?
That's what I'm saying, yeah, this study.
Yeah, we, I think we should put that online. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 16-11, a resolution amending electric utility rates.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. This is a resolution, we'll do roll call voting. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scholes.
Aye.
Okay. Let's move to Hamilton Quick Claim Deed.
We're looking to see if we can pull a map up on the screen, it'll help explain this. A number of years ago, we obtained some property from Blair Hamilton and his wife. Mr. Hamilton lives on River Bottoms Road in an incorporated county area. As we obtained some property, which would be for some future road and trail purposes, there we have the map. We obtained what's in the red-marked area. We obtained that property also, and that really, as you can see on our left, is, encompasses all of River Bottoms Road. And then as we move more to our right, which should be to the east, it's just off the road, but basically what will be one day part of the right-of-way. Now, that is not our street, we don't maintain it. It's a narrow street, it's a windy street, and we think it behooves us at this time to deed this back to Mr. Hamilton. We've talked with him about that. He is willing to take it back. He would like to get it back because as he plans to do some development in the county, he's probably going to need that for some frontage issues that he will need with the county. So our recommendation tonight is we approve a quick claim deed for the property that you see, a hash marked in red, back to Mr. and Mrs. Hamilton. And really, we look at this as avoiding liabilities, we're really asking that we receive no compensation for it. Now, let me add, as we talked about that, too. The other property we obtained is over here, and we need to keep that, so that is not part of what we obtained earlier. This just happened to come along with it, and as we've analyzed and looked at that, we see no need that we should have that at this time. That would be the easement.
I don't want to buy it, though.
So Chris's comment was, we might need a trail here, and he recommends that we deed it back with a trail reservation easement for a portion of it right here, which would be certainly appropriate. It would be a quick claim with an easement reservation.
Someone get that?
Easement reservation?
Quick claim deed with an easement reservation.
I'll make a motion that we approve the quick claim deed with the Hamilton for the, oh, now I already forgot.
Great trail.
With an easement reservation.
With the easement reservation.
Very good.
Jeez, mitigation.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose?
You just gave us a reservation. We can have, we can have a casino.
You're welcome.
Hey, we just funded the city for the next twenty years. Good. All right, approval of salaries schedule.
Thank you, mayor, council. We have the salary schedule that we review annually. We started a process nearly two years ago to review these in more detailed form. Let me give you a little bit of history. In 2006, we hired a company called The Hay Group. They came through and did some major evaluations and adjustments to our salary system. Frankly speaking, a lot of the adjustments that they made to our salary system were great. They gave us defined range, range sizes, they gave us better tools that we could use the ranges, how we could use the ranges to incentivize performance with the employees, and those have been received very well, both by the majority of the employees and by the supervisors as well. One of the things that we didn't like about The Hay Group that over time we began, we began to really not like, is we couldn't see how they got the ranges that they got. And sometimes the numbers that they gave us didn't make sense. So as a council, you asked us to look at tweaking the salary system, and we started that a long time ago, and it is completely my fault that it is two years later, and I am before you now with that. And I probably wouldn't have this done if it wasn't for the great assistance and help from Tyler Jacobson, the new assistant city manager, who as soon as he took over, started working on this and has done a large amount of work and a yeoman's effort in getting it ready to present today. So Tyler, thank you. We've talked with the personnel committee, we've talked individually with council members, and have reviewed a lot about what went into the salary study and some of the changes that have occurred. We have, before, we had ranges that started at number three and went to number 11, so eight ranges, and then we had some management ranges totaling seven ranges as well. They were called three, four, five, up to 11, and then 10M through 15M, and then there was a CM, or city manager, range. The Hay Group divided those up because they had two groups of cities that they compared to. One group was six or seven cities, and the other group added those, took those same six or seven cities and added to it another four or five cities, and that made up the management group. And so it created two different types of range comparisons. We, as we got into the study, it didn't feel like there was any reason to keep two sets of ranges, and so we have proposed in this salary schedule, new, a new numbering system. And you have, I gave you earlier a copy of the salary ranges, and the public can see on the board, or on the wall here, that a grade three stayed a grade three, grade four stayed a grade four. We did create two new grades because of some large gaps and some of the problems those gaps were creating for some of the positions that we had. Grade 10M now becomes just a simple 13, no lettering with it, and so on. You can see how those adjustments occur. I want to report that the, about half of the positions, sorry, about half of the ranges will see some kind of an adjustment upward. Some of them have significant jumps. The largest moving jump is grade, previous grade nine, now grade 11. The data for that range was overwhelmingly behind, and so the range needs to jump eight percent in order for it to be within the market, which we have identified that we'd like to be, we call it the 60th percentile. Other ranges move, a couple, three ranges move about five percent, or a little bit more than five percent. Couple of ranges move about two and a half percent. Some move just a little bit at 1.7 and 1.5, and then about half of the ranges don't move at all. And again, that's just simply based on the research and the data, that those ranges, the positions within those ranges were being paid where they needed to be. And last year, the ranges adjusted, and this year, there just isn't movement in those particular ranges, and so those ranges are not being proposed to change. We have budgeted funds within the current fiscal year budget that is sufficient to handle these adjustments as given, as well as include some merit for the employees. I think it's important to always note that just because a range moves eight percent, or five percent, or zero percent, doesn't mean that employees will receive that exact amount. It also doesn't mean that an employee at zero will get a zero percent raise. This just simply means the range. But an employee's performance within the range might mean that they merit, and we use the phrase merit, an adjustment of one, two, three, four percent. Specifically, those employees who've been with us for a few years, if you've been here for one, or two, or five years, employees should see a decent increase because they're learning, they're. because their learning, their growth, and the value that they are contributing to the city grows every year, a little bit faster than somebody that's been here for a long time. "I've been with the city for 12 years, and I'm not as productive today." No, wait, that's not what I meant to say. Now, "I've been here 12 years, I'm not learning as much today as maybe I did when I first started." Now, for me personally, I'm still learning quite a bit because I had a little bit of a change happen, but you get the picture. The more recent you've been here, typically, the employees move a lot quicker. As they get more tenured, their raises seem, or tend to lessen just a little bit. I don't want to talk too much, I don't want to bend your ear too much. I want to be able to answer any questions that you have. I want to point out that on this salary schedule, there are nine positions that I would like to somewhat hold back, if you will, for a little bit more study. And I'll name those so that you can have them here in this meeting. The positions are Substation Technician, Recreation Program Supervisor, Accountant, Fairgrounds Manager, Librarian, Children's Librarian, Library Systems Coordinator, Service Substation Foreman, and Facilities Maintenance Technician. These positions saw a tremendous amount of movement, either up or down, and as we got into the data, we just, to, by tonight, couldn't get a comfort level that we should either move them dramatically up or dramatically down. And by dramatically, I mean, some of them would move down $9,000 in their range, or some positions might move $5,000. If the data says this position is, should be lower, then we need to do that. But I don't want to do it without really getting into the data, frankly, calling cities, getting job descriptions, and making sure that we're comparing the right positions to the right positions across those cities. And so I'd like to hold those positions back, and maybe by next council meeting, or in two council meetings, we can have that information and make that adjustment for those positions. For the employees that might be watching or will watch later, these are proposed to be effective for October 1st, which is actually the current pay period that we are in, and so raises would go into effect right now. The employees don't get paid for the work we're doing right now until that latter part of this month, so everything will be current. For the employees that I just mentioned, the positions rather that I just mentioned, if we don't adjust them today, but we do adjust them later, any adjustments for those employees, we would do retroactive, so they wouldn't miss the October 1st deadline. They might not get it in the next paycheck, but maybe in the subsequent paycheck, they would get a little bit, they would get what they missed the first paycheck. We call that retroactive, and the employees know all too well what that means. Any specific questions that you have, any concerns that you have? I will note also, on this spreadsheet, there's the Cable Technician and the Customer Service Technician positions was mismarked, and instead of being a grade nine, should be a grade eight. I mentioned that to you earlier as well. Any questions or any comments that you have?
Thank you for all the work. That's a lot of numbers, so thank you.
Thank Tyler. Thank Tyler. It was, it became apparent at some point, Tyler said to me, I think it was Monday yesterday, feels like last week, he said, "I just want to get this done." And the look on his face was pure exasperation. And I said, "I think we need to cancel the appointments that we have with department heads," because we were planning on meeting with department heads and going in depth on this stuff. I said, "I just don't think we're ready." And you should have seen the color in his face just drain. And I said, "I'm so sorry. I feel like you're trying so hard to guess what's inside of my head." And again, Tyler's done a great job, and we're now at a point where we can move things forward very quickly and get things...
What's really nice, Tyler, is to see the look on your face today. That was Seth's look about eight years ago, when he was going through the same thing. I remember it well. Yep, so you guys did a great job, and we appreciate that. You know, we value our employees very much, and, you know, we want to have the best we can, but also, we want to be fiscal responsible about our employees and the money, because we know it's the taxpayers' money that we're using here. And so this is why we spend so much time and try to get it right. We want to keep the best of the best here, and we don't want to lose them. And so, but we're very well aware of what you, the citizens, have entrusted to us to make this right. So thanks, guys, for taking care of that. If there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'd, really quick, Mayor, just encourage the citizens out there that, in the day and age we live in of government transparency, this is great stuff right here, where people late at night like to Google search and go all over the interweb to try to find what ranges are and what people are making if they live in their city or something, and it's like, here's some information, you know? And it's not just fly-by-night, and nobody's winging it. It's studied over months and months, and a lot of time and effort, and we're thankful to you, I know, as a council, and the mayor, like the mayor said, and Stacy said, but the citizens should be grateful, too, that you guys take this as seriously as you do and try to be right where it is, so we're not losing good people all the time and retraining and rehiring, but we're not wasteful in anybody's money either. So it's all there for everybody to see, which is good.
There really is a good balance that we've tried to do, and again, with this Hay Group, from 2006 on, the council, and you have continued the thought of, "We don't want to be average, we want to be slightly above average," because we value the investment. And there truly is an investment in the employees. We pay them a good wage, and they learn while they're here, and if we lose them in a lateral move to another city or another job, it hurts. We have a few positions, we feel it every once in a while, and sometimes we're ahead of it, and sometimes we're reacting. Right now, there's one or two positions where we're reacting, frankly, and ouch, dang it, you know, we missed it, and wish we could do a better job, and we always try. But it's a good balance, and I think your thoughts, Mayor, like you said, that we want to be careful that we're not spending too much. At the same time, we want to make sure that we value the employees for the work that they do, because these employees are amazing. This morning, I was up on 4th North, there were guys cutting up asphalt, digging in cold water because the water line broke, and you better believe, they were up at 4:30 this morning getting that started. And the employees do that kind of thing day in and day out. They really are worth every penny that we give them, and they do a great job for us.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve salary schedule of the Spanish Fork employees.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose?
I move we go into closed session.
A motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for all those who are here.